Welcome to the city Saint Joseph, City Council meeting of March eighteenth, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one million, hundred thousand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, public comments, anybody wishing to speak to the council on items not related or not on the agenda, please step forward, not on the agenda. Three minutes. Yes.
Okay, I'm just wondering what, my name is Tim Borsh, I live at Leventhal Avenue Northwest, Saint Joseph. I guess my big question is, the channel one eighty-one has not been up and running for a year now. Never had any notification, I thought that Carla was gonna take care of that or something was going on, I, I just curious, just wondering what's going on? Are we paying for that still, the taxpayers paying for that and it's not there anymore, or what's up?
We will find out, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Item three, approval of the agenda. Motion second on the agenda, any changes? All those in favor signify by aye, aye opposed, motion carries item four consent agenda. Motion second on consent agenda, any issues or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye, aye opposed, motion does indeed carry item five, let's get at it.
Alright, thank you mayor and council for your consideration this evening, if we can flip over to the staff laptop. Okay. There we go, so for your consideration this evening council and mayor is a request for a home occupation license at two oh one Pondview Lane. Cheryl Matters owns and lives at the property and is proposing to operate a licensed home massage therapy business. Massage therapy businesses are permitted through a special occupation, home occupation license. This does require planning commission and council approval, conditions can be placed on the home occupation. The ordinance does require that a initial home occupation license be issued up to a maximum of one year. And then after the first year, the permit would need to be renewed and reissued through the same process of planning commission and council action. Ms. Matters is proposing to operate the massage therapy business within a ten by twelve room within her residence. No signage is proposed on the exterior or modifications to the home itself. An applicant will be required to meet all massage license requirements and inspections. And all parking generated by the business will be met on site and the applicant will only have one client at a time coming to the home. The proposed hours of operation are from Monday to Saturday from ten AM to six PM. And then the permit again will be, would be good for a maximum of one year. The planning commission did review this and then did recommend approval on a six oh vote at their last meeting. We did receive a couple written comments on the request and those were included in your packet. Ms. Matters is also, from my understanding, available on the Zoom call. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion on the finding of fact resolution twenty twenty-four zero fourteen. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions, should the council have them.
I move to approve.
A second.
Motion is second, what is the resolution number again?
Twenty twenty-four zero fourteen.
Twenty twenty-four zero fourteen. Questions or concern?
I do have a couple, parking will take place in the driveway, they don't need any special parking?
Correct.
That's correct.
Means that all the parking that's generated by the business is met on site within the driveway of the residence.
And then they, she will have to go through all the licensing, licensing separate from what all the other massage therapists have to go through.
Correct, so yeah, this home occupation license just relates to the zoning element of it. And then there'll be another layer that will go through Kayla and the license process.
Thank you.
Okay. Nate, does the city do an inspection?
Yes, yeah, we usually do an initial inspection just to verify that what they proposed, they're doing, they are doing, yeah.
Very good, motion is second twenty twenty-four fourteen, any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye, aye opposed, motion carries. Nate, wanna keep going?
Yes, let's rock and roll. Alright. So, for the mayor and council consideration this evening are some items related to the House of Hearn. So House of Hearn is building, or proposing to build a building and that building requires some approvals along with a parking plan. And that parking plan also would require some approvals. Just some background here, so Craig and Brian Hearn, who are the owners of the parcel at thirteenth second avenue northwest, are proposing to develop the property. The property is currently zoned B one downtown commercial, this property was rezoned in accordance to the comprehensive plan back in November. They're proposing a fifty-eight hundred square foot building with off-site and off-street parking. And they'd be seeking approval on a extension for a non-conforming structure, a variance for the north rear building setback. Variance for parking lot setback, variance to the maximum impervious surface coverage. And then approval of the overall parking proposal as they are presenting it. The surrounding properties to the west, north and south are all guided for future commercial, but have a current zoning of residential. Properties to the east are all zoned residential. Here's a couple depictions of the building that they're proposing. And then here's a couple layouts, the one on the left-hand side is the layout of the building. And then the one on the right side is the proposed parking lot, which they're proposing right directly to the south of thirteenth second avenue northwest. At a property that's owned by the Sisters of Saint Ben's. This is from our comprehensive plan, so the areas in red are our commercial downtown district. That small yellow circle that you see circled right there is the subject property where the building is proposed at, at thirteenth second avenue northwest. So our first item is the public hearing for the variance to the north rear building setback. The applicants are proposing a twelve-foot setback to the building from the north rear lot line. The ordinance does require a twenty-foot setback to residential districts. A unique facet of this is the property to the north is what we call a legal non-conforming use. It is a commercial use in a residentially zoned property. So the barber shop that is on that property, that property is zoned R three multifamily guided for future commercial. Like what was shown in that plan earlier. And again, it's what we call legal non-conforming use. Twenty-foot setback does apply due to that property however being zoned R three multifamily. If the property was zoned commercial, then a variance would not apply for that north side. And also a detached cooler and trash enclosures are being proposed setback at the lot line. Here's just another, the same depiction of that building within the lot itself. Here is a street view of the lot looking to the northwest with the approximate area of where that rear lot line is. Just to remind the council in that, for variances, we do look at state statutory requirements and how the variances are acted upon. And those are, number one, that the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, that the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance itself. And then that the applicant establishes that are, that there are practical difficulties. And those practical difficulties include that the property owner is proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner. But cannot do so as permitted by the ordinance. The plight of the landowner is due to the circumstances unique to the property. And then that the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. So the requested action for this first item is the variance to the rear building setback. We would ask that a open and close of the public hearing and then the second action would be a recommendation on the finding of fact resolution. Twenty twenty-four zero fifteen, which would approve the variance to the north rear setback. We have also included a finding of fact resolution that would deny the variance. At the planning commission, we did hear from three individuals who didn't express concern at that meeting. And then we did receive one written comment in support of the request that was included in the packets. The planning commission devoted and the variance did fail on a three-three vote. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise be looking at those first two steps there.
Yeah, with that being said, we'll open the public hearing on variance for rear railing setback, anybody wishing to speak, please step forward, name, address, please.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Cross and I'm with company called BCI Construction based out of Sock Rapids, Minnesota. Our organization has been designed for, or has been contracted for the design and construction of said project. We've been able to bring several projects to the city of Saint Joe and we look forward to bringing another one over to the area. In preparation for the project and tonight, I wanted to make a statement in favor and support of the project. While I am biased and I do acknowledge it, I think there are several points of consideration for council tonight to, for us to bring forward in here. First and foremost, we've talked about the twenty eighteen comprehensive plan. That was completed by the city of Saint Joe. We feel that this intended block and larger areas for commu, for the commercial expansion and we feel that our design fits really well into that design, into the intent. While we know that the future, like the current area is zoned residential, the commercial use seems to make a lot of sense for that continued expansion. Obviously, this was approved by the city for their future guidance and which is included for many opportunities for public and feedback when it was passed in two thousand and eighteen. In November of twenty-three this year, went through a process where the physical property was brought to end design for commercial use. Which we went through, we, which was uncontested at the time and we felt had really good favor and support. For the zoning, I'm sorry, for the variances, we, we are bringing a variety of variances to help support the project and the property. We fear this is merely just a process to match the intent for the future that which adopted from the city of Saint Joe. And we feel the design complies well within the commercial standard for site use height and many other things that you'll be, that'll be coming up tonight and within our application process. We think it's important to note that we've been intentional about our design of the facility. It features a support of a quasi-resident, quasi-residential and modern, modern construction standards to help support. And hopefully raise the property values of the neighboring community and also within the city of Saint Joe. You'll have a chance possibly hear from Craig and Brian Hearn, who is current new to the, new into the development, new into this business avenue. And, but I think they've done a really, really amazing job for how they've gone through trying to get formal feedback from the community. And, and their, their quest to make sure they're designing the property in the right way. Many of the, the owners have personally called anyone whom left numbers in their interactive feedback response. And, and initially, many of the local neighbors reached out in an opportunity to partner with the project. We have heard some recent opposition at this last week's planning commission meeting. And I think it's really important to take a couple things into consideration when considering that area. The block for which the building is actually designed to be upon has been experienced formal commercial leasing for rental units for, for a long time. I think every one of the houses that we can see on that block have been a residential, have been a for lease situation. So essentially, everyone we feel has had the opportunity to benefit from that type of invest, investment, but a business nonetheless. For the block that the parking is designed upon, the public, there was public opposition last week and we received from a resident challenging the setback for the parking. Which we feel is a common practice in these types of areas and setups. One of the unique things about the property that didn't have a chance to come up is that the house is clearly within the setback. As well as we're talking and even closer to the setback line than we're trying to propose for the parking. We're not trying to do this out of contention, we're just trying to say that, you know, the property brings some unique areas that we understand our parking is encroaching on some of the, within that area. But we think that it fits well within the design intent.
Hey Ryan?
Yes, sir.
Are, are you gonna speak about all?
Yeah, I was trying to get through all of them and then I'll be done.
Because, okay, well, I'm just, I wanna make sure I understand, we're talking about five B right now and I know you're talking about all the others, so.
Sure, and I apologize, they're all kind of quasi intact, trying to find the best way to do this and get, get on with the night. You know, I think the last thing I wanna say in regards to the variances is we, we do acknowledge that, you know, with this development and some of the things that we're proposing, we're willing to listen. And why we not, you know, in regards to fencing, screening, all that stuff. And while we can't guarantee we're gonna adopt all those, we just wanna say, we're, we're willing to try to be really good partners with the project and the intent of the property for the neighbors, because we understand there is change coming. Last thing about parking, I just wanna make sure that we understand that when we talk about the parking. We are indeed matching the parking limits that are required for the building. And we think we're doing so in a way that's cohesive to the remainder of the downtown area. Our parking is consistent with other downtown areas in regards to how the parking structure is, we, we may, we, we acknowledge that there's some cross-street parking. But it's just not practical to get all the property in the parking within one area. So we just wanna make sure that you, we're trying to be really intentional and come up with creative solutions that we think make a lot of sense. Target market for the area is really important too to this business, we just, we think it's important to understand that this is trying to be a family oriented fair that's targeting like artistic fair. You know, food and, and just opportunities to gather in a different way, similar to that of Crew and Bella Caccina, some of those areas. So, so we're really excited about what we think this target brings to it. You know, in summary, we understand that there's gonna be some opposition to some of these items. And we understand it's tough when the neighborhood changes, when there's not a hundred percent certainty of, of all the details. But we also know that this is a really healthy change for the area, we know that the previous development had some contentious approach. And, and we think we're trying to bring something that's cohesive, cohesive and collaborative. We do believe that there's gonna be healthy sales tax revenue that could supports the area. There'll be more families enjoying food and, and footwork in the Saint Joe area, something that they're so good at, so proud, proud of. And I truly believe that this group is a truly fun concept, a proven concept, a great plan and a horse, host of supporters from civic to the monastery and many other areas of air, of collaboration here. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Anyone else wanna speak to the variance for the rear setback, not the entire project? Variance of the rear setback, please.
Don't appreciate it, okay, I understand, all this works, Mr. Mayor. Okay? We had discussed at the planning commission last, my name is Tim Borsh, we talked about this again, Leventhal Avenue Northwest. We had discussed this variance last time and I, I guess I got corrected, you're only, you're asking for twelve feet out the property line instead of taking up to the property line. I guess they're asking for eight foot, there'll be eight foot left of your property. Doesn't show it on here, what's, where the property lining and where it doesn't, it's so incomplete when I just try to understand. I, I've asked and I still, it doesn't show on the diagram. But anyway, we were talking about the cooler as being separate and there's doors going into the building, which would lead me to believe that, that's connected to the building. There's also another door that's the, so you got nine foot, ten feet on the cooler, then you got another six-six for this other building that's also got a door going to the inside of the building. Which they're saying is all detached and I, I just wanna clarify that, I don't believe it's detached, so that would be part of the building. Which it looks to me. And then, and I know this is, this is just part of it because this is, this, this whole, this whole system that we're talking about here. Ryan was on the same thing, we're, we're trying to get through everything in one step, but yet we have to part this out and it really is difficult to part it out. I'm wondering what's gonna happen with all the snow off that roof, it's a big roof, it's a big, big roof. And if you follow the footprint that, that they're asking for an extension on. All that snow that's on, that will drop onto the Schneider property, all of it and the adjoining property down there. There is no way to get rid of it, that is their snow that's going on somebody else's property and that, and Diane actually has parking right there. So who's gonna be responsible for all that snow falling on the vehicles is where they're parking, because it's that close, it's two feet. So, you know, I don't even know if there's an overhang on the building, but if there's a two-foot overhang, it's gonna be dropping right on the vehicle. So something to be addressed. Gutters don't stop snow from falling off the roof, but meant for summer water. So I guess some of my, my things about this part that I'd be concerned about, I just think the building's too big, I don't think we need to. If we could downsize it, we would not have all these variances that we're asking for all the way through. That's my, and it's a great, if you guys know me, I'm about beautifying Saint Joe, I like to keep my grass green and my house is looking nice. So it's not that I don't disagree with this project at all, I just think that they're asking for, if you, you can't put a football field inside of a hundred by sixty area. I mean, that's what they're trying to do and I just think that you, you, you need, you know, why, why do we have to suffer the residents in the area? Have to suffer because the ordinance stands the way it is, twenty-foot setbacks. And now they're asking for every little inch, when all they have to do is downsize and not have it, and then abide by the variances or the ordinances that are in play right now, which are twenty-foot setbacks. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Hi, Chad Holsman, five oh nine twelfth avenue southeast. Mayor, council, thanks for letting me speak, I'll be brief. Background, I was on the planning commission for about six years, other than for the last year, I stepped away for a little bit. So I can appreciate the process they go through. And in full transparency, I'm also Craig and Brian's neighbors, neighbor, so been neighbors since, for, well, he's owned a lot for seventeen years. So we've been neighbors for seventeen years and, so just to be fully transparent, I do support the variance five B, I'll stick to that. It does follow our comp plan, which I was a part of. And it's very clear in there what the idea, long-term vision of this area is, they just happen to be first. So as the businesses, as the area transitions around them, they will not be, they would not need a variance, because there's already a business there, so they, so. I think one of the tools that we have for variances is to allow us to transition from this residential to B one. Does that make sense? So like the barber shop transitions to B one, they don't need a variance, because they have, they have a business to the south of them. So I think that's why, because they're first, they shouldn't be held to a higher stringent standard of the business setbacks, so. That's just my opinion, I don't feel the eight-foot changes, the setting or feel from the outside, but I think it's critical to any business owner that tries to maximize their square footage for their business, so. That's really all I wanna, in regards to five B, I support the, approving the variance, thanks.
Thanks, Jay.
Diane Schneider, Tim pretty much said everything I was gonna say, I own the property right next door. The overhang, snow and ice is gonna come falling on. My unit is licensed for three people, so that means three vehicles and they're, they're side by side. So that last vehicle is going to be right coming down where the snow and ice is gonna be coming on to, on to their vehicles. So, I don't, I don't know what, what the plan, Nate said they're gonna have gutters and whatever, but we know in Minnesota, gutters are not gonna stop, because once they get filled with ice. And they freeze up, everything's gonna slide off and then I'm gonna remove all that snow off my property too. So, I've owned a business in town and every time, and I followed the law, every time that I had to do something to my building, I'd have parking. So, I mean, they're, they're solving the parking problem, but the, the variant, or the, the thing they have, the cooler up there and. I'm, I'm not good at speaking, I'm sorry, but um.
You're doing fine.
To move, I, I don't know how to explain the whole thing. I don't know, I don't know what else to tell you, Tim pretty much spoke on all of our behalf, the neighbors were all at the meeting and they weren't very happy about it, so. I'm sure you guys all heard about it already.
Thank you.
Eric Tyson, two oh eight Iris Lane, Saint Joseph. There's a lot of issues and Tim covered some of them with snow removal. This snow coming off the east side of that building is gonna land on sidewalk of second avenue northwest. Right in front of their door and also on two main street, or Minnesota street, it. What happens to that snow, where are you gonna put it, there's, there's no setback on the backside, the dumpster is there, you're not gonna push it up against dumpster. You need room to contain your own snow and runoff. It. Rain, yeah, you can pipe it in, the city's storm sewer, why shouldn't city be taking care of it? Any other business needs green space, not impervious space. The sight lines for traffic there, that building's way too close to the corner. You get large vehicles, farm equipment coming through there, there's nowhere to get around. Delivery trucks, where delivery is gonna be made, are they gonna be made on Minnesota street? You have turning traffic off second heading west. There's gonna be a beer truck sitting there, people dropping off people, it. There's, the building is way too big for the space. It's second busiest stop, four-way stop in Saint Joe, it's dangerous the way it is, kids crossing there. And yeah, the whole issue with parking, it's, it's not right. And then for a non-conforming structure, it says that it can't be expanded from the current footprint to the non-conforming structure that was there. Well, I can guarantee you this building is bigger than that structure that was there, that was already non-conforming and setbacks. So how are they getting by with the expansion? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi, Craig Hearn, four four seven twelfth avenue southeast, my wife Brian and I are the projects, we'll probably speak again a little bit later, we get to the parking proposal, but I'll keep it brief. On the part that we're talking about right now, there's a couple things that are kinda going beyond that, so I'll try to touch on them quickly as best I can. As Ryan said, this has been a learning process for us, we're really trying to get what makes the most sense for the city and taking account safety and everything that we can think about is a priority here. In regards to being too close to the corner, you look at Hudson and Company, that is about as close, close to the corner of a main intersection as you can get. That power pole is right there off that four-way stop, that is closer than where our building will be. So there's a lot of precedent sent, set right now in a commercial building. If it is rezoned future with the comprehensive plan, zero setbacks do apply and there's a ninety percent of the property you have to stay within. So our building is actually well less than the ninety percent of a commercial ordinance, so we could go zero setbacks. Technically on all three sides, if everything around is part of the comprehensive plan and still staying well underneath that ninety percent for a commercial zoning. So we've really thought about that, so in regards to the building being too big, a lot of people say that. Regards to the snow removal, I know we were talking about the north setback. I think BIP's property is the west, so that gets into the, you know, the existing structure, so that's a different point, so I don't wanna get off track here. We're really just, that variance is about building where the existing was, I think Nate can elaborate a little bit more detail, he consulted with legal. In regards to that, which really helped with our design process of that, where the existing structure is and the size and how that works. So I'll maybe, you know, kinda go to you at that point, Nate, in that conversation you had with legal, but. But really in the north setback, I just wanted to address that one specifically, because that was a, a split vote. And I think there was a lot of confusion around that setback and I just wanna try to clarify as best I can tonight. So I, I think our building is twelve feet back, that's also kinda creating a delivery lane, also for a dump truck, also for the garbage enclosure. So a lot of our traffic getting out of our building for deliveries and so forth are structured in that twelve-foot entry. It's gonna have its own cut approach, it's well, well back from the intersection to create safety and in and out flow there. We're staying away from Minnesota as much as we can. Regards to Bud Martini, I worked, talked with him, had a lot, had a great relationship, my wife and I in regards to the property. He's very encouraging in what we're doing, he has absolutely no issues with our setbacks. I think what we were actually trying to do was, we were actually looking at doing a zero setback in compliance with commercial. The building just happens to be twelve feet from the property line. So I wanna clarify that, because the planning commission got hung up on the cooler. And the coolers being outside the building is a common practice in a commercial business, that's with a lot of places, they have it at the Gary's Pizza. As an exterior cooler, right, so it's not part of the structure, it is attached, but it's not considered part of the building, so. So really, we're really actually looking for a north zero setback, which really eliminates the whole cooler and the garbage enclosure. Cooler and the garbage enclosure, you know, that's kind of where the planning commission, I think, got hung up on. A little bit. I think that's where there was confusion in that vote and I think it kind of came a little bit clear as we touched on the other. Uh, variances throughout the thing and they realized that it was something they couldn't go back to and I think maybe they would have liked to. Uh, after we talked to the civil person at the end, but anyways, I just wanted to clarify, it's more about a north setback. Zero setback to the north. It's commer-, it's currently working as a commercial entity today. They all recapped it that if that was rezoned how it probably should be, then a variance wouldn't even apply in this situation specific to the north. Briefly, I'll touch on the next one because Bit brought it up and Tim brought it up regarding the snow removal. We're just following. The setback of where the existing structure was. Uh, regards to size, we'll get into that at a later point. Uh, I'll talk to that later, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about the north and the west, the differences, just to kind of keep it a little bit clearer.
Anyone else wanna talk about the sec- or the uh, sorry, the variance rear building setback? See, no one else, we're gonna close the public hearing and move into council action.
I recommend that we approve the finding of fact to pass twenty twenty-four. Zero one five to approve the requested variance.
I second that.
Motion and second, uh finding of fact resolution twenty twenty-four fifteen. Questions and concerns?
I got one.
Yeah.
I did, now what's the uh distance on the east side? And the.
East side?
South side from building to curb. I don't, I couldn't catch that in the drawings that I have. Uh, the distance of the curb to the building from the uh.
Minnesota to the face.
Minnesota to the face and also I think it's Second Avenue to the face of the east side.
And I apologize if I don't, those plans, Nate, are you able to pull up that site plan for me really quick?
Yeah.
It should be called up.
I don't see your numbers that tell me that.
Oh, sure. I'd have to scale it. Um. We are just voting on.
Yeah.
The north setback, Bob.
We'll get those numbers for you.
I'm talking, I just wanna before I.
Yep.
Decide on my decision here, I'd like to know that. And the curb on the south side and the north side.
The e- east side is a zero setback. And then was the south side, the other.
Minnesota.
The other one. Yep, so that one, um their property line actually goes into that sidewalk area. Um, so they're proposing to essentially be right at where that previous uh structure was.
What's the distance from the curb on the street to the building? Right.
Give me a second.
I'm just looking at this, the site level and all I would look at it.
I'm just. Do you have any issues with the rear building setback? Okay, while they're looking that up, while they're looking that up, we're talking about five B.
No.
Accepting the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four fifteen. And I only have one question. Um, goes to Tim's question, are they attached or detached? The cooler, the shed? I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, so the way I understand it is the cooler is technically detached, but it. Correct.
Okay.
And you can enter it from the bill, in, from within the building.
Yes, correct. Yep. And in the finding of fact, we do have um the language that does tie to that.
Okay.
And talks about the building being at the twelve foot and then the cooler and the trash enclosure being at the zero.
And so just so it's, it's a building of itself attached to the main building, right? Okay.
So um also to answer, answer Bob's question here. Um, so I pulled up a aerial, this is a rough measurement, but it's about twelve feet or so. Um, basically going from the south.
Okay, so motion and second.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, okay, cuz I'm, I need, I just wanted to know after, if we were to pass this. How much room is there? Um, you know, we are, we're hearing comments, we're hearing, you know, snow removal and all this. Is there enough room for that, for them to be able to take care of that snow on those variance areas? Okay, cuz when we say setback and I, I did watch, I wasn't able to go to the meeting, but I did watch, I have to say it was very informative. Um, and so I'm just trying to clarify, cuz I think there's a lot of misunderstandings going on. Um, in that, and so I just wanna clarify that there is enough room. For that removal, those kind of being able to get in between your business. And the residents in that area so that they're able to um comfortably, you know, remove and get things done. And I don't know where that question would go to.
Ryan Cross, BCI. Uh, if I had to, I mean, my professional opinion, I'm not as worried about the north. Or the west or the south side, manage it any other way, any other commercial properties managed. Um, being within that two-foot setback, obviously it's gonna be a little bit tighter. Uh, and, and we're still gonna have to still be good neighbors and figure out a way to make sure we're working through that. And I think that's what these two will obviously do when it's all said and done. Um, we can definitely get obviously shovels and blades. It's a little bit more labor intensive, but we can access that space and maintain that. We, the, the design actually does not have gutters, does not have overhangs with the design, so it will fall straight down. Um, there will be some pileup against the building, all of which we're planning for and consistent with trying to keep the snow on our property. We're also talking, when you divide the roof, the slope roof is only gonna make up about two thousand square feet of that building. So we're talking about misplace, displacing two thousand square foot of surface area of the roof. Not the entire fifty-eight hundred square foot as over half the building will fall the other direction. Or, and then if it doesn't hit the, and then we have a flat roof portion as well.
Okay.
So.
And so what I'm hearing to and through, I mean, yes, words are words, things can change. But being able to be that good neighbor in that sense in the back area to be able to, I know it doesn't. Probably wouldn't look as best as it would, but maybe, you know, um compromising in the sense of gutters or anything in that atmosphere. Um, to be able, in the back area.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. You know.
I, I truly believe again, north with the back area is gonna be much more manageable and consistent. Um, as well as the east and the, and, and Minnesota Street facing side. It's going to be that two-foot setback that we're gonna have to be the neighbors and, and collaborate if that makes sense. Um, I, I feel relatively confident in that and their ability to make sure they're doing that with the best practice.
Thank you.
Fair response?
Yes, thank you.
Motion and second, five B, twenty twenty-four fifteen, including the variance finding the fact. All is in favor, signify by I.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries five C. Is it just a extension?
Yes, um, so just some background. So for a non-conforming structure, uh the previous gas station was demolished in April twentieth, the twenty twenty-three. That structure was setback at two feet off the west side lot line. The structure was considered illegal, non-conforming structure due to the setbacks. Um, that building was also a non-conforming uh use uh due to the commercial nature of that previous structure as well. Um, here's just a couple of pictures. Uh, one is in the upper left is from two thousand and twelve. You can see when the site was a little bit more active and then the one on the bottom right here is taken from a different angle. Uh, but that's from October of twenty twenty-two. Uh, so for a non-conforming structure, the code does allow the applicant to replace the structure within a year, as long as that non-conformity, which is the west side setback. Is not expanded and then non-conforming setback is not increased. Um, so when the code talks about expansion, um it's referring to that. Setback itself and not expanding the non-conforming setback. Um, so the applicants are requesting that the timeframe be extended six months to October of twenty twenty-four. Um, the applicants would like to start construction as soon as possible, um but you know, unknown factors play into this as well. So requested action for the council this evening is a recommendation to allow the applicants a six-month extension. In order to replace that non-conforming structure on the west side with that existing or previous setback of two feet. The planning commission did vote five one to approve the extension request. Um, and earlier on in the process, as there was different concepts going through, uh we did run this through legal in regards to the. Uh, language and the non-conforming structure extension. So be happy to answer questions.
I move to approve the six-month extension request.
Motion and second approving the extension. Questions or concerns? All is in favor, signify by I.
I.
Opposed, motion carries uh five C. Go, right, five C? Oh, five D, sorry.
The community development alphabet. Um, so the next item is a parking proposal that the Hearns are proposing as part of their building plans. So the applicants are proposing to develop the, you know, parcel at thirteenth Second Avenue Northwest. That proposal leaves no room for onsite parking. Our ordinance does allow developments in the downtown district to propose alternative parking arrangements. Uh, so the applicants are proposing to construct thirty-eight parking spots at two oh two Minnesota Street West, which is directly south of their. Proposed building location. That lot is owned by the Sisters of Saint Ben's. Here's just a couple of other street views. Um, the first one in the upper left is just a view of the proposed parking area. Looking south, that green spot and that green lot right there is the lot that's owned by the sisters. The one in the bottom right is just a closer view of that. So as part of the parking proposal, um the total quantity of parking spots that the Hearns are proposing to construct, which is thirty-eight spots. Is um and does meet our parking requirements, so they're not asking any reductions for the total quantity of spots. We calculated that calculation based off restaurant use, which goes off of tables and chairs along with the expected number of employees. For the use. Uh, part of the project would also uh require them to do, uh the Hearns would require them to do crossing improvements. On the west side of that intersection, uh to create a safe crossing on that west side of that four-way stop at Minnesota and Second Avenue Northwest. Uh, the applicants did explore other options, um surrounding their site, but no agreements were made in regards to that. So the parking proposal includes uh what the applicants are proposing is. Uh, uh agreement with the owner of that property in the terms of a five-year lease. Uh, city code does allow, again, given that this is a downtown district, to accommodate redevelopment in the downtown district. The council may allow alternative parking arrangements, which includes uh lease uh stall agreements in the presence of public parking. Uh, longer lease is not proposed at the current moment, just due to the owner going through some strategic planning. Of their own in regards to their operations, um which they can probably touch on later. The owner has provided written support to work with the applicants after that five years. Uh, the plan for the parking does also trigger the two variances that. Um, are up for consideration this evening with a variance to the west side setback and max impervious surface. Um, so we'd be requesting a recommendation on the proposed parking proposal and location. The council can table this item and move on to the variances for the parking proposal if you prefer to do that first. Um, this recommendation is for the location, the plan, and then the lease arrangement as the applicants have proposed. Planning commission did vote on this um and approved uh on a five-to-one vote for the parking proposal. So with that, be happy to answer questions.
Did planning then vote to approve the variances? Was all, was that all one big vote?
So what the planning commission did is they tabled action on the overall parking proposal. Took action then and went to the variances and then came back for the overall parking proposal, which is the location and that.
Well, the elephant in the room is the five-year lease. So when do we, when do we talk about that? Now or?
Well, it's part of.
At some of the, okay.
If the, if the, if the. Variances fail, then the parking proposal will have to change, correct?
Yep.
But we wanna do the proposal first, yes?
Doesn't matter.
I would like table and look at the variances myself because I think the elephant in the, in the room is, does. Is that a residential lot or is that futuristic? You know, because it belongs to the sisters, there's a, there's a double-edged sword here. And so I just wanna make sure we're doing this right and is, if all the other areas next to it are residential. For a purpose of future business, is that also because it is owned by the sisters?
Then we're talking about the proposal, not the variances. Variances have nothing to do with the proposal.
Well, I mean, it, it, well, it, again, it's a double-edged sword, but I mean, I would like to have those answered first, you know, I. Cuz how can we do that if they go into it and it, we've gotta make sure it's. Okay, first that we can actually put a parking lot there. Because the, the sisters are leasing it, but don't they have to come for a permit to make that a parking lot then?
And I would, I would tell you that five D is the proposal. Once that's accepted and you can ask all your questions, then we can go into the variances.
Thank you. Well, thank you for clarifying that. I just wanna make sure that that's getting answered.
I move to approve the parking proposal.
Second, motion and second approve the parking proposal. Questions and concerns now?
Okay.
Now you can go.
There's a question.
There you go.
If somebody can answer that, you know, if, if, well, nah, if, does it, is it for future? I- is that, or is that a separate thing? Do you know what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, so, yeah, I would go back to. See where my map is here, I'm on these sides.
Wait, there it is.
Yep, so yeah, right to the south of where that circle is would all be commercial.
Uh, you know, nonprofit and the whole nine yards, I don't know if that's a different ballgame or not.
It's part of the commercial.
So it doesn't matter. It's, it, it is a commercial for future. Okay, that's why I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, it's a future commercial district.
Okay.
Along that stretch. Yep.
Yeah, I guess I think maybe the question you might be asking is, I think you're, you're wondering if, since it's owned by a nonprofit, does that change any of the status?
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, if it's, if the, the ownership of, of the underlying land really doesn't make a difference, it, what really guides it is what the, what it's owned.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I wanted to get. Thank you.
Questions anymore? I have a few. Sorry. So at the end of five years, if monastery or Saint Ben's would say, nah, we wanna keep the land. Then what's the proposal for parking?
I would defer to the applicants if, um.
Well.
And the sisters, yeah.
While you're thinking about that, it's on Second Avenue Northwest. Does that mean we have to upgrade Second Avenue Northwest? As part of the street plan? Well, otherwise it's minimum maintenance road, right? Or we, we have to plot with them. If there's a parking lot there.
You mean the alley?
No, it's Second Avenue Northwest, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well.
No.
It's looked like an alley.
That is second.
Yeah.
It's second avenue.
And, and we, and we do maintain it already.
Well, it's.
But does it need to be improved? I can't answer that.
Yeah, so that's what the question is. If it's going into a parking lot, is it gravel, minimum maintenance road? Or what? So that's a, that's a question for.
The applicants at the planning commission mentioned the idea of paving it. If I'm not mistaken, and they can speak to that if they want to.
Well, then it'd have to meet our standards, our city standards, but let's go back to if the. I don't know if you're prepared to answer five years of fails, what your alternatives are. Or. And, and I, we're, we appreciate you. If you wanna come and speak to working with after five years, I'd like you to sell it like in a year, if you could. What? Oh, I said I'd like you to sell it in a year if you could.
Our preference would be to sell it.
Okay.
But we're um hindered by the fact that the college has the first right of refusal. So. And as I said last time, the things that have to take place with the college in order to do something like that are not fast. And so this is a situation that needs to happen quickly. And so we thought the only way to really make this work for them is right now to lease it to them. And I cannot envision the monastery. Knowing how much money they have to put into that parking lot to make it a parking lot. Saying after five years, oh gosh, we wanna do some other thing. Sorry, you put all this money in there, just figure it out. That's not the way we operate. Um, now I can't guarantee you what the, what the college. How they operate, but I know that the current president. how they operate, but I know that the current president supports this adventure, uh, uh, this project. It has a lot of pluses for the college. And, um, so I think if worse came to worse, we would just continue to lease it for them indefinitely. I think that would be an option for us if we felt that somehow the college was not going to come through.
Okay.
Uh, so that's what I can say at this point.
Oh, very good.
Is there anything else that? Is there anything?
Thank you. Nice encouraging words. Those are only, my only two questions. And I mean, I think the Second Avenue has to, I mean, we have to either put that in our street plan or not, or leave it minimum maintenance and gravel, but I don't.
And, and from my understanding, the council can put conditions on the parking proposal. I'd have to double check with legal if, you know, a condition would be to, you know, have them pave that, you know, access point, um, with the alleyway. But the council does have the right to put conditions on.
So the other concern I have is it's a parking lot that's at, like Eric had said, it's a busy intersection, so on and off, and I mean, Second Avenue also doesn't need a stop sign, I would assume, versus coming in and out of a parking lot.
There is, there is a stop sign.
It already is.
On Second Ave?
Yeah, so we have a four-way.
It's a four-way stop.
Well, never mind.
Yep.
Is it?
Yep. Stop sign here.
I just always see that as a U-turn.
Over there.
You've always just driven through it, huh?
That's me. You didn't hear that Dwight?
The only thing, I, it's look at how close the residents are. That, that's my only concern. Um, I, I am so supportive of, uh, the college and, and what the couple, it, I mean, you are alumni. And, um, so I know that you are trying to the best of your ability to do what you gotta do to make as, you know, as best as we can. But that's my only concern. It's just like sandwich right in between. And I get it, it's business area, but there's this gray area and we gotta try to find, uh. Thank you. Yeah. I get what you're.
So Ryan, the other thing is we should consider striping there as well. Pedestrian striping. Like that whole corner, east, west, north, south.
So one of the things that the applicant is going to be required to do is they will have to create a crossing on this west side from the building location to the parking lot.
Sure.
And then that will have to meet all the ADA standards and such.
Just that side or all, both of them.
Yeah, so the other side does have a crossing, um, right here. Um, so they would have to make improvements to this west side, um, and they have agreed to that. And that is per the condition that they'll have to meet.
Well, from the city's perspective, we should stripe that as well. Just make it louder, clear. Okay.
And you're suggesting paving, right? All the way down.
Uh, I'm just saying it's gravel now and we'd have to consider use and abuse and stuff like that. But, you know, long-term gravel is not kind of the perfect surface, but that's a, probably a side note.
Yeah.
Okay, motion and second on parking proposal. Question, other questions or concern? All is in favor, signify by I. I oppose, motion carries. Five E.
All right, um, so next public hearing that we have is for a parking lot setback on the two oh two Minnesota Street West. Um, we require fifteen setbacks from residential districts. The property to the west is zoned residential, but it is guided for that future commercial, um, like we had showed earlier in the slides. Um, the applicant is proposing to be four feet off the west side. That measurement is from the asphalt of the parking lot to that property line. Um, per the, uh, improvements or, uh, conditions, the applicant has agreed to do a vinyl fence on the entire west side to buffer, uh, those parking and buffer the headlights and that, that would be coming onto the parking lot itself. And then to do shrubs on the east side of that parking lot. Um, we are not recommending any fence just due to the sightlines and that coming out of that alleyway. Um, so that's why shrubs are proposed on that one. So the requested actions is to open and close that public hearing and then make a recommendation on the finding a fact resolution. Uh, at the Planning Commission level, we did have three individuals speak and express concern. And we have that one written comment that was in your packets that was in support. Planning Commission did vote for two to approve the variance request. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
No, thanks Nate. We'll open the public hearing regarding this, uh, public, uh, parking lot setback, two oh two Main Street West. If wishing to speak on the parking lot, please step forward.
Again, Tim Borsh, Eleventh Avenue Northwest. I expressed this at the Planning Commission. And we were going backwards with everything and, and now we're doing the same thing. We're already, um, approving variances or setbacks without even any input from anybody, none except for Kevin. Exclusion of Kevin was at the, the Planning Commission meeting. None of you were there. Maybe you watched it, maybe you didn't. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. You know, but it's like, well, how come I, how come you guys can accept all this before we get to speak? So, uh, there's a lot of concerns that anybody, we had the pub crawl last Saturday. And was anybody uptown to, to, to see that? Were you there? Okay, so, and I'm kind of direct to say you, Kevin, because you came here, not as a council member of the Planning Commission, but as a citizen. And I was up there for quite a while. And your comment was that the parking lot that the city or the church owns that, uh, Bella Caccino gets for free and, uh, the crew gets for free. I mean, they all get, they take advantage of it. It's not theirs. Um, which I appreciate, at least they're, they're trying to have their own parking lot because nobody else in town does. So, but as I was up there, um, you said it's working just fine. Well, if, if Dwight wants to bring anything into this, I noticed a traffic jam of cars at that intersection. There was at least twelve cars back on, at one time coming towards the government center. There was, there, there was people stopped in between the intersection. It was a, it was a unbelievable ruckus and the parking lot was two-thirds full. Um, so it's not working if you've got people that are parking back and forth and you've got nowhere to go. And now you want to put another one of those same conglomerates, uh, right next to my house. Um, so when we're talking about putting a parking lot across the street and everybody says it's working just fine, no, nobody got killed that day. That's what we're saying. It's dangerous. And if we're going to put another one of those close to my house where I see kids, dogs, everybody walks their, their kids up that block. So, um, I'm very concerned about the whole thing. Not to mention, uh, in two thousand eighteen, we're talking about this, uh, the new downtown in, in my area, you know, I wasn't at that meeting. I was never notified of that meeting. As this one, nobody notified me that they're going to vote on all these issues that we talked about, the Planning Commission. Nobody told me, nobody told Diane. You know, you guys just want to pass this stuff without, you know, any of us actually voicing our opinion. And it's like, so when we're talking about passing this parking lot across the street, I'm speaking not only for Janet, because she had to work tonight. She took off work from last, last week. And I'm also talking for Alice Schindler. Now Alice Schindler is eighty-six years old. She hates this to a passion. She was here at the last meeting. She couldn't walk up here. She asked me if I'd come and talk for her tonight. She is so concerned about all the traffic. And my concern is why is the city, the taxpayers paying for a tarred road for these people that have to put a parking lot on a, on a residential area? The back part of that is thirteen feet wide. It is impossible. And I want to get, make that clear. It is impossible to have cars come in from that back alley. This should never be approved from day one. I don't know why we're approving variances and doing everything. We're not looking at the whole picture. And we can't seem to talk about the whole picture because we have a, a a meeting for this, a meeting for that. Ryan was right when we said, this is, this is one project. But yet we're talking about parcels here, parcels there, parcels there. This is one big project and it should be talked as a big project. You know, the size of that building, the snow, the, the parking lot, but yet we have to sit there and talk about just the variance on Janet's side, about the fence, you know, and, and there's a big concern there. It's right up against her house. And you can show all you want about how much land is between Alice's house and the parking lot. But let's not, let's not get away from the fact. All they're saying that you have to paint a couple of lines on the other side to make it accessible for safety? No, that's not it. There should be, when I was there measuring all that land, two cars, not one, but two blew right through that sign coming from uptown, blew through it, thirty to forty miles an hour. It happens all the time. So when we're talking about just putting a couple of lines down to make it safe for everybody, that's not, that's not going to cut it. Not going to cut it. That when, for some odd reason, they blow through that, they don't blow through it up a college avenue. It's a short stop to a short stop. For some odd reason, they're coming out this and they go right through it. And they do. I'm not lying. So Alice, Alice's concerns are the dust. So now it's, now the city has to pay for a road because of somebody else's endeavors. That's ridiculous. Now what about the back parking lot or the back alley? Okay, we have a thirteen, I measured it, thirteen feet. That's all that's there. Yep, we have setbacks, but there's, it's twenty feet from the fence to where I measured would be their thing, twenty feet. Now, that's, there's barely enough room right now to get one car through in the backside. Now we got, now if they come out of that alley and they decide to take, go west instead of back out towards Alice's and another car is coming that way, it can't pass. So now we're going to have to do something with that back alley. More taxpayer burden on the city of Saint Joe. So then it comes to my alley because I own the whole house next to Janet's. And then they're going to start coming up that alley. Now I'm going to have to deal with all the dust, all the, all the stuff that's coming through. I, I'm not a mind reader. I don't know whether they're going to all drive or not drive. But now they're going to come down that alley, make it more congested, make it more congested about onto, onto Minnesota Street. Or they're going to keep on going towards Saint Ben's and then come out there. Well, now we're going to have to put a four-way stop there because nobody can get out. It's congested. So for them to put a parking lot on that side in a residential area, I don't care what anybody's saying about the, the new downtown west. You're taking, now this is one property that started on the, the north side of, of Minnesota Street. And now we're already saying, well, let's just build over on the south side of Minnesota Street and just let you start it. Well, no, that's residential. It's all residential. And that, and that parking lot shouldn't be in a residential area. It's not fair to Alice. She's going to have to listen to cars all day and all night. She's eighty-six years old. And then lights are going to come through them bushes that they got there, not only when, when they park in, but when they come back out. And if you look at the diagram, if Nick could put it back up there, when they come back out, they're going to be pointing at her house. Every one of them are going to be pointing right back at her house. This is not fair to her. She's lived there all her life. It's not fair to Janet. It's not fair to me. There should be no parking lot on that side just because everybody decides all of a sudden that there's going to be a new downtown. No, it's not going to happen just because one person wants to build a damn building on one side of the street, which I, we all know we want to beautify that side of that corn lot. But now all of a sudden, we're taking it into the next, the whole next alley. And it's like, that should not be. This is all, it's going to be a big tax burden on the city because now you're going to have to take care of all this extra, extra work. Where is the snow going to go from that parking lot? The parking lot takes up everything it's got there. They're going to have bushes all along. Right now, city of Saint Ben's, they pushed the snow into that lot. Where's that going to go? Are they going to bucket it out every single time? Where's it going to go? Is it going to go to Alice's yard? There's a lot of stuff here, a lot of stuff that people aren't looking at about this, this parking lot that is very, very important. Not just to me, not just to Janet, not just to Alice, but the taxpayers of Saint Joe. There's a lot of burden here, and I don't think that I should have to suffer through all of this on that side of the street because somebody wants to build a building that's too big for the lot. It's just too big for the lot. But you guys all sit there involved that it's, you know, it's just like, no matter what we say as the people that live there. Yep, you guys may have gotten input from people on the, on the east side of town. They don't live there. I live there. I have three houses in that block area, three of them. So I should have a right to at least have a little voice about how we should be developed and just because um, future development comes, that they should get setbacks for everything because of future development? It's not. It's still residential. Diane has, has a right to her property. I have a right to my property. Janet has a right to her property. And by God, Alice Schindler needs the privacy of quiet and no lights facing in her yard.
Thank you, Tim.
Please consider that before we go to partners.
Anybody else want to talk about the setback? Eric?
Eric Tyson, two oh eight Iger Lane. Um, the big concern is renting this for five years. We know how Saint Ben's develops property. They change their mind. They do what they want. Um, this is a non-taxable lot. All their property is non-taxable. So the city is going to eat all the costs for the upgrades to Second Avenue, which Nate called it an alley. It is not s- uh, alley. It's Second Avenue Southwest, or Southwest, yes. Um, going to the city engineer, how far back from a stop sign do you have to have no parking? On Minnesota Street, say. Or even a Second Avenue, if they upgrade it, it's sixty feet wide according to your map. Is there going to be parking on the side of that?
Eric, you mean on the street?
Yeah, in, so the so-called the alley. Is there going to be parking on that side? There's parking on bring up the map. In front of Alice Schindler's house.
On Min- on Minnesota.
No, on Second Southwest, the short stub of the alley going into Saint Ben's. Yeah. Is there parking along there? There's parking along the rest of Second Avenue going north of Minnesota. So then you have cars in the alley or on Second, I guess, alley, whatever you want to call it, are going to cause more congestion parking in there. And it, if it is going to become a street paved, it should have come up to standards. Every other business, if you're putting in new industrial park, you have to pay for the infrastructure going in to the, for new development. Um, coming up to that four-way stop, nobody stops for it. Dwight can attest to that. They sit there all the time. They sat in JR's lot for years under the overhang. They know there is a problem there and there's cars flying through there. You're it's asking for accident and it's going to be put on basically the city council if someone's killed there. It it just isn't right. And the snow, the water, what, what do you do with it? Why should the city taxpayers pay to get rid of water coming off of a private parking lot? They can contain it themselves. Every other place has to. Or do stormwater retention underneath it or whatever and snow removal. That size lot, you're going to lose six, eight spaces at a time. Are you going to haul it every time? It's costly.
Thanks, Eric. Anyone else setback? Soon no one else come forward. We're going to close the public hearing and then move on to counselor actions.
I move to approve the setback.
I second.
Uh, motion and second on, uh, approval of the setback. What is that? Sorry.
Uh, it would be twenty twenty-four dash zero sixteen.
Okay, thank you. Twenty twenty-four zero sixteen, motion and second on twenty twenty-four zero sixteen. Question, further questions or concerns?
Um.
Yeah, on that, um, on that setback.
Yeah.
That's off that, uh, property where that house is?
The west side?
The west side.
You're speaking to?
Yes.
Yep.
The west side of the parking lot proposal.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so it's off that, is that garage on that with that house or is that on that lot?
That garage is on the lot where the parking lot is proposed, so that would be removed.
Yeah, that's going to be gone.
To answer that, uh, um, gentleman's question, um, we can put as, I was, you know, no parking on the outside of those bushes so that no parking could happen. It would only, you know, it's a drive-through. It cannot, there could be no parking.
That's correct. Yeah, we also have the. That's correct. Yeah, we also have the yellow striping on the curb for the on-street spaces in terms of Minnesota Street. So we do have. Uh, we allow parking, of course, on Minnesota Street, but there is spacing from that intersection, this four-way intersection. Um, that's already in existence and that one change.
Ryan, you stated that you currently do plow. The, the south side of Minnesota Street.
Yep, second slash alley. Yep.
And it would be up to the city if we saw like a greater need in the future of like. There's large potholes or like it is a significant dust problem like that's. At a future time, then the city can decide that this needs to be paved or this needs to be improved.
Correct, yeah.
And Nate, as it sits with like the parking lot proposal and like us maintaining that road currently. There's nothing like on the books that requires it to be paved since like a new structure is being erected there in a parking lot. There's nothing that states they have to pave that.
Just have to have access through a public way.
Okay.
Is there gonna be, uh, is parking lot being lit? And. What kind of?
Yeah, so we, we, we've talked about that a little bit. So as per, um, the next step would be a site plan submitted on that. And they are aware that they would have to have cutoff style, um, lights that are directly downward facing. So there's no light pollution. They'd have to have a photometric plan submitted as well. That photometric plan will have to meet our max allowance for, um, the lumens. Um, as measured to property lines and then to street, uh, rightaways.
Yeah, and, and I, they did that when they put in surrounding at Seventh and I still, uh, without some really, really dark shades. Those lights go all night long. I mean, they're directional as well and all that. So I have some concerns about residents. And the light glare that, or glare that they're gonna see. So. I don't know how you fit that in, but you guys need to figure that out because surrounding Seventh drives me crazy and.
When I think the concern too of that parking being able to be shining in that woman, you know, to maybe, you know, fencing that. Maybe not all the way up, but you know, that should be conversated about.
Yeah.
And I'm not aware of how many lights they're proposing at this moment, just because those haven't been submitted yet.
Yeah, and I'm not sure who said it, but you're right. Surrounding Seventh, every night they come and go, that shines in my front window. So I, I appreciate any action that can be done to mitigate that. Uh, motion and second variance to, uh. Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm offline. What is it again?
Uh, twenty twenty-four. Dash zero sixteen.
Twenty twenty-four zero sixteen. Motion second twenty twenty-four zero sixteen. Other questions or concerns? Those in favor signify by I.
I.
Motion carries. And we're near the end. F?
Yeah, and I lost my. Presentation thing. It's doing this weird thing. Hold on, give me one second here. I can see it on my screen, but I can't see it up there. So I have to try and drag it.
Right.
Impervious surface.
There we are.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right. So the last item for, uh, consideration as per this proposal by the House of Hearn is the, um, public hearing for the variance to the max impervious surface coverage. Right now that max limit is fifty percent. The applicant is proposing eighty-five point three two percent. Um, and that is because they're paving the entire lot and just, um, proposing to meet the total number of spots that are required for the use. Um, for the building. So the requested action is to open and close that public hearing and then take action on the finding a fact resolution, either approving or denying. And at the planning commission level, we did have one individual, um, speak and express concern. And we also received one written comment in support of that request. And then the planning commission voted for to, to approve the variance requests. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
We'll open the public hearing. Maximal on impervious surfaces variance. Wishing to speak on that, please step forward.
Tim Borish, London, David Northwest, um. Without a lease, without them owning the property. Without any kind of for sure thing, you guys, I can't believe, this is ridiculous. You guys are sitting here voting for something that, that they don't own. And I don't understand why this is such a screwed up city council.
Anybody else? Impervious service? So no one else come forward with close the public hearing and open to counselors?
Just clarifying, because I just need to say this out loud, that. Once they sit down, once the sisters in there and sit down and be able to get this situated. Um, and if it doesn't happen, then it, everything goes away. Okay, so it's not like, it, that has to happen first. I, I, I just watching the, um. The planning commission, I, I think that was what was the misunderstanding of this. If this is prepping. It's, it, because it's a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of money, lot of money. And so you're prepping right now. Doesn't mean it's a possibility that could happen. Um, but it's. Just clarifying for the couple because they have a lot of money on their mind too, along with. Um, the city. And so it's important that. You're just clarifying. Doesn't mean if that falls through and it doesn't happen. Then it doesn't happen. So I, I needed to clarify that, if I'm saying that correctly.
That's cool. What you're saying. I was at the planning commission meeting last week, because I'm on the planning commission. And what Craig had stated is that. They don't have a written and signed lease in hand because it'd be financially burdensome to them as their project. It'd be burdensome to. The sisters' women in the monastery. So like you just said, this is a lot of planning, drafting, deciding what can and cannot be accomplished. And going through all these processes, then they can identify, this is what we're going to invest in and what we're going to seek to accomplish. At this time, I don't have any questions on the impervious surface.
Uh, so I just do, what is the, what is the requirement?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent? Okay, okay. I, I just wanna get clarity of what it was exactly.
I move to approve twenty twenty-four dash zero one seven, granting the variance.
Motion and second, twenty twenty-four seventeen, variance on impervious service. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by I.
I.
Motion carries. Thanks, Nate. Thanks, guys. Going against, love to hear you from, love to hear from you. All right, uh, must be on like Georgetown.
Uh, hi, Mary Bruno, Bruno Press, one five four Fifth Avenue Southeast, uh, director of the CBB.
Anne Reesner, sixteen North College Avenue. A member of the CBB.
That's right, right hand, my right hand. Okay, so, um.
There you are.
So for about the fa- uh, past five years, I think we've been, um, running the CBB. And we've been trying to brand the city and create tourism opportunities. And, um, it's been really awesome. So one of the things we did was we did like a strategic plan to kind of figure out what our core values are, like, you know, what our mission, yada, yada. And some of the main things that we agreed that our core values are, are, you know, promoting Saint Joe. Through festivals and events and involving the community in any way possible. So that being said, back in, this was like mid twenty twenty-one, like sort of post-COVID. Like the world was still, you know, going to hell in a handbasket, but we were trying to figure out ways to get the world, you know, like our community to come out and do stuff. So we had kind of been spitballing, um, we called it Jotown blocks. And the reason we came up with that was we wanted to, in theory, have these block parties that would move. You know, they'd be on College Avenue, they'd be on Minnesota, they'd be on this in, in, in the hopes that we could get. You know, all the businesses involved and do all these cool things. Um, so that was something we were, we went really kind of far with it. And then, you know, I think it was me mostly that got cold feet, you know, and, and I was like, okay, we're not doing it. So we put it, we tabled it. And recently we've kind of come back to it. And, um, so I think like in the last three months, we've kind of reignited. Talks about doing some things, just small, something local, something for the community. Um, and. You know, we wanna do something that supports local musicians, local food, local drinks, you know, kids stuff. In theory, we were just talking about like a, a festival, community festival, right? Like, we wanted to time it so it doesn't come anywhere near. Jotown Rocks or Mill Stream or, you know, the fall and after September where there's a hundred million things happening. So we kind of talked about early June, right? Um, and you know, I was like, the way that I was talking about it was I really kind of wanted it to be. Old school, you know, like back in the day when there was dunk tanks and, you know, just goofy stuff that gets. The businesses engaging with the people, not necessarily trying to, you know, make all the money, but just have kind of a connecting sort of. Like event, right? Um, so that's what we've been working on and we are trying to propose. Um, so we're. Doing all the things to figure out the logistics and, um, basically, let's see, we, you know. We need some money to do this. Uh, so we have, you know, we have like some lists of things that we've been working on figuring out. Um, you know, porta potties, dunk tank, couple of bands, some photographers and. You know, all the other things that go with it. I mean, I think we wanna keep it contained. We wanna block off, um, Minnesota Street. Um, from college to middle of First, middle of First Avenue. You know, we wanna have all those businesses open and involved. And we want to, um, you know, car show, uh, get some police out there and some fire folks, you know, kids, yada, yada. Um, so that's kind of the gist of it, Anne. Would you like to?
And the market, farmer's market will be as pictured on the top left.
Yes.
Across that parking lot, which we got approval for, uh, another member, Pia, got approval from the church to use that lot for the farmer's market. Um, and the kids stuff as well.
Yeah, I think, um, Janelle or, um, who was it? Rhonda wanted to have a little kid event that happens in the church lot. And I think they have already. Okayed or got the word from the church that that is potentially okay. Um. So this is, you know, like I said, we're not trying to be Jotown Rocks. We're not trying to be, we're not trying to get people from all over the world to come here. We just kind of wanted this to be.
Just Saint Joe. Just Saint Joe. Every town, many towns have their own little town festival and that, that's where this brainstorming came from. That's where this idea came from. So we would ask only local, um, locals to have food and, and whatever they wanna provide, just. Anybody from Saint Joe to be a part and be out on the street that day.
Yeah, so we wanna have a booze tent, you know, so we wanna have Milk and Honey, Bad Habit, Obink. Um, you know, we wanna do all, jump through all the hoops to make sure that's cool. And, uh, yeah, local, right?
Burgers and brats and.
Lions.
Music, yep.
Meat market. Um, so that's our vision. And you know, like I said, it's not supposed to be some big threatening thing that's gonna take over the world, um. But it's just like a small thing that in theory we wanna be sustainable. We're thinking maybe, um, some raffle tickets that we could raise money. To have some in the kitty for next year to just keep doing this. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't, you know, the, probably gonna be a question about how many people do we think are gonna attend? This is obviously our first shot at this. I have no idea. I believe on, on, um. July is the proposed, is what date we wanna do from noon to five. So if it's a nice sunny day in June, we're probably gonna have a lot of people. If it's.
Not sunny.
Forty-five and raining, it's probably not gonna turn out so well. So, um, you know, I think we've talked about maybe a thousand people if it's a super great day. But I, I have no, no idea. So we will need to, um, talk to the chief about some, probably having some police presence for safety and security, obviously. Um, and work with, uh, Public Works and Director Ryan about, um, picnic tables and garbage and clean up and all that kind of stuff too. So. And all of the CBB members would be, um, helping out that day, working it, managing it, um, directing people. We certainly will have a better plan for the beer garden, whatever that's gonna look like. That'll be one gated area, one in and out. So we'll be able to.
Dwight, Dwight, I volunteered you for the dunk tank.
Yeah, do it. Yeah, all the council members are going in the dunk.
Oh, you first.
I was already on vacation that week.
No, I volunteered. I'm gonna be a part of the dunk tank. It's gonna cost you a lot though.
Yeah, so we, uh, we figured out, uh, a kind of, um, preliminary budget. Uh, we have a, a bunch of volunteers. And we just need some permissions and some dough.
So this is discovery. So this is where, yeah, we get to ask questions. How does it do? What, what's the issues and make sure we, you know, understand all the things going forward. Kevin, yeah, go ahead.
So do you have a budget?
Yeah.
What is it?
Nine thousand dollars.
And I believe the EDA, we've talked about allocating five thousand from our EDA. Budget towards this. We're gonna talk about that tomorrow, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and we talked about it in, back in October, I think is when we had talked about it.
So you have five there, then you'll figure out the other four with.
Yeah. Five to nine thousand.
Okay.
So that, yeah.
So that's one question. The second question is, how many members are on CBB that are helping organize this?
Um, I think there's like.
I think there's ten.
Yeah.
Ten.
Yeah, I think ten.
And they're all in? Or are you two just getting stuck with this?
No, no.
Delegating, that's. Yeah.
Everybody, I mean, really, it's the CBB, everybody's volunteering to do some.
Yep, yep.
And then you talk to the church about the East Lot for the kitty games and the farmer's market. Uh, and Anne, you and I talked about ten AM mass. On that Sunday, Feast of Corpus Christi. The parish is gonna march out. With a monstrance. With the Blessed Sacrament and we're going into Saint Ben's to the Mary statue and coming back. So that entrance that comes off of First into the church, you're gonna be doing setup then. I just really. Encourage you to keep that open. I know you, he is. I know the event doesn't start till noon, but you're gonna be setting up. So I really think. Parishioners have to get in and out of that parking lot for ten o'clock mass.
That's gonna be difficult.
Well, then you get to talk to the church about that.
I will, definitely.
Yeah, just gotta figure that out.
Like, cuz I just felt like if we could have them, you know, shout out a couple of weeks before, folks, here's what's happening.
You just need to get the church in the loop, so they know what's coming down the pipe.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. We can do that.
Totally, that's all I have. Okay.
I was just gonna suggest that you take the farmer's market and go put it in the church parking lot. But with what Kevin said, could, I'm looking at like College Ave and you're not closing College Ave, correct?
Right, correct.
So to eliminate people walking across the twelve crosswalks we have on College Ave all day long. Um, could you put the farmer's market in the church parking lot? At a later time in the day, like you're looking at the three-hour blocks, like two to five? So like the church is happy even if you have a presence of a farmer's market? And let the kitty games be like in the little grass playground area?
Kitty's aren't gonna be anywhere near. I mean, I'm open and we all want the church to be happy, that's for sure. I mean, so whatever. We're not stuck on anything. And in fact, the farmer's market was a little bit of an afterthought.
Yeah.
That I honestly said, I don't think it's a good idea, but whatever. People wanna do stuffs, but I think we could move it anywhere. So. If church is unhappy, this probably isn't gonna go down very well.
Oh, I don't think the church is gonna be unhappy. Just get them involved in the process.
Yeah, so they could be part of playing. Um, I think this is a great idea, not because I'm part of it, but my only question is the. The bridge is gonna be done by then, right? So we won't have to, that's the only, that's the only thing I'm worried about. I'm praying that it'll be done by then.
But we don't want those people either, right?
I don't know. Will the bridge be done?
I just, cuz that's added.
Jody, can you, can you, Jody, can you keep it closed? Jody, keep it closed for another couple of weeks?
Well, I'm just saying the added, you know. Traffic in between. So I just didn't know when that was done. That's the only thing I'm worried about is just the traffic.
First, you know, is there an?
Jody? There you go.
No, thank God. Okay, then.
Now I'm glad you're here. So really, this is discovery. So if there's other things you're thinking of, should include, should abandon.
Any suggestions like that, that you think would make the transition easier, we're all about. Like, nothing's set in stone yet, so.
I think what we're gonna try and get church involved is how do you wanna participate? Do you wanna sell things? Do you wanna do kitty games? Do you wanna do something on your own to participate?
Knights of Columbus sell hamburgers or something.
Same thing, yeah.
Tootsie Rolls.
Or, yeah, okay. So right now, EA is going to talk about budgeting tomorrow, right?
So from my understanding, the EA, we talked about in October and then recommended and made that motion to support the five thousand pending, you know, console action and that.
So we're going to see the budget tomorrow.
Yeah, we got the budget. And I mean, it just, it just happens that things, we want to pay everybody, want to make sure bands get money. All of a sudden that just inflated. It's not our fault.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
I think that's it, unless anybody else has any question. Very good, thanks girls. Well, I was going to make, mention one more thing. Well, so the CBB, those two gals are contacting all the businesses on Minnesota to make sure they're aware of it, what's coming and parking and those things.
I'm sorry, one more question. So we should be done and out of there by seven, is how what I'm understanding. We should, you know, it finishes at four, five, right, five, yeah. So then cleaning and all that, okay, perfect.
So what are we on, number seven?
Six.
Oh, seven. So I'm going to let Kevin talk about this. Right?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
So I attended the APO meeting last week. And there was big discussion on an environmental assessment project that's connected to building a bridge across the Mississippi River at thirty-third street. This is part of what's called, is it the Beltway or the Beltline, the whole? The Beltway. And what the group got stuck on, if you want to go into your packet and get down to attachment F, it's on page one fifty-three of the PDF. Was the formula for which jurisdiction, how much each jurisdiction is going to contribute towards the environmental assessment. The assessment in total is only two hundred thousand dollars. And Saint Joseph is allocated on their, basically the base APO formula says that we would contribute ninety-two hundred dollars towards it. Sartell, uh, made a big stink because their city's the furthest away from the bridge and they're on the hook for twenty-six thousand dollars. The dollar amount, the APO formula is tied to population. So we went around and around and we ended up with a proposal by, uh, Mr. Persky that the two hundred thousand dollars would be funded by one hundred thousand coming out of the APO reserves. And those reserves are, uh, they build up because of dues that the various cities pay. There's three hundred thousand reserves now, we'd contribute a hundred thousand out of the APO reserves. And then Saint Cloud would participate with the other hundred thousand. And then the city, the rest of the cities would pay zero. So I thought that wasn't a bad idea. In the long-term scheme of things, we're kicking the can down the road on two issues. One is, does the Beltline really benefit Saint Joseph? Should we be thinking of buying right of way? Engaging in environmental assessments? I mean, this Beltline's been talked about, you know, as long as we've tried to put a sewer line out to the freeway.
That's a true.
And so that's a longer term question. Then the other question is funding formulas. Are that, what's appropriate for each jurisdiction to participate, uh, in, in the APO? So the short answer is for this EA and this, we all agree that this EA needs to happen because that bridge needs to happen. Even if we never build the Beltline, the bridge going across the Mississippi at thirty-third street would be a key asset to the region. It's a big hole in the transportation infrastructure. And so we want to see that move forward. So, uh, no one was leaving the room unless we were going to get that two hundred thousand funded to start the EA. And the EA is one step in a multi-year process to build like a two hundred million dollar bridge. So this is just the first half of the first inning. That's the update.
Thank you.
Did you need anything else?
No, that was perfect. I was just going to say, at some point, we're going to have to discuss at some workshop. Either determining whether we want to buy right away for the Southwest Beltline or what we want, how we want to get involved with that at all.
And we're kind of in, we're in the same boat as Wade Park. I mean, we're on that edge and Wade Park's wrestling with the same.
Same issue.
Do we put money into this, to, to this, uh, transportation infrastructure?
Very good. Questions at all? Very good, eight eight. Oh.
Engineer.
Anybody? Wake up.
New here.
Been a long night, I get it.
Yeah, we'll keep it moving. In front of you, you have two resolutions related to the County Road one thirty-three project. One of them being a resolution to approve the county plans. Plans for the project and one that would ban on-street parking from County Road seventy-five to fifteenth Avenue. I believe, um, Jody Tyke, the county engineer is in attendance. So I, Jody, I don't know if you want to speak on any of this or not, or if, I guess if the counts, any counselors have any, any questions, but that's what you have in front of you is resolutions to approve the plans and approve a ban on on-street parking.
Counselors?
This is where we're playing in the roundabout?
Yeah, it is. Well, it's the intersection and out to fifteen, so.
Just making a mental map.
So is the one point two million that we're looking at here, is that out of our budget, Lori?
That's the, the, the project budget for that, that stretch.
But is that our cost? Is the?
No.
Okay.
It's not our
It says budget impact one point two million, so that's what's throwing me off.
This is also, um, the county had applied for a federal grant.
Yeah.
Which they're going to share some of that grant proceeds.
We're going to have some skin in the game, but not this much.
Right.
Okay. I don't see the motion to.
So I move resolution twenty twenty-four eighteen, approving the project within our corporate boundaries.
I second that.
Motion in second, twenty twenty-four eighteen. Questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, motion carries. And I'll move on twenty twenty-four nineteen as well. That's no parking.
Second.
Motion.
I have a question. Is there parking along there now?
Yeah, I think there, oh, isn't there?
No, no.
No, no.
If they park, they're taking their life in their hands.
Yeah, because if they
No, okay.
Okay.
That's curiosity.
Motion in second, twenty twenty-four nineteen, parking restrictions. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, we're good. Thank you, Jody, for waiting so long. Uh, what's last year?
Mayor and council reports.
Department reports, anybody?
Yeah, um.
Mayor and council, it's, so the department is, so, um, just two things, mayor, I'm not sure if you're going to be bringing up the, um, the all-city board meeting.
Oh, I was going to mention.
Okay, yes, I'll, and then the only, the other thing I was going to bring up is, um, we have had a request, been working with, um, our Parks and Rec director, Ms. Jewel, um, some pickleball courts. So, uh, we were bringing forward here, uh, probably at the next meeting, a request for the city engineer to do, to do the plans and specs for that. So, um, I know there's been some scuttlebutt about it here, so I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that, so. That's all I have, little butt.
Also with the park board, we had, um, Mr. Wetterling come to speak with the park board. Kevin had processed that through to us and he had requested, um, and he's just kind of plating it for us and, um, he would like to be able to supposedly, the rock on the
Southwest corner.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, was
Kleinfelter.
A dedication with three trees. He, and he kind of left it there and he was kind of waiting, he said, before he takes his last breath, he would like to have at least one, place to be able to be dedicated to his son. And he was kind of waiting to see what the community center was going to. But he's kind of losing hope in that, no pun intended. But he wanted to see if we could put a plaque on that rock that was dedicated in the corner. What we had suggested with him, um, because he thought that the city had done it. And so we had referred, we said, well, we'll, we'll speak with David, um, and process it through to see if we can find that in the history. In the meantime, he said he was going to look on his end. But I think we need to bring this to a work session, be able to see if there was some concern with the Kleinfelter's I was Stacy and things like that. And so we just wanted to be able to talk a little bit more on that subject and see how we can approach that.
Okay, very good, thank you, really. Okay, okay. So this Thursday, sorry, this Thursday, Friday is CGMC Legislative Action Day, and I have some meetings set up with Senator Putnam and Senator Davis, um, Senator Howe, or sorry, Reverend Senator Davis. Senator Howe is busy and I haven't heard back from Perryman yet. I'm also trying to meet with the lobbyist, um, Darren Lee from CGMC. Also from Flareton Hood. On March twenty-sixth, the end, our, our work session this year or this month is the all-city board and commission meeting. So tell your boards and commissions, we'll go state to city, and I've kind of warned staff that they're going to have a little bit to play as well when I finish my spiel. And that's really all I have.
I got one thing.
Yeah, go.
So, Mr. Murphy, I was under the impression when Jason Wood presented last time that he was going to reach out to council members. And that hasn't happened. Do you, can you give us any insight as to where Wood is at, fundraising consultant?
Means where is that, um, with financial, with, uh, with
Reaching out to us, communication, uh, are, are you in contact with Greg, Jake and the Y? I just, since I stepped back from the fundraising component, I haven't heard Boo.
I will reach out to him and see where, where he's at with that. I have had some communications with, uh, Jason Wood here recently. He has not indicated to me as far as where he's been at with meetings with, uh, the council members. It has been a little bit since I've spoken to Greg, Jake. I know we, um, are planning a meeting among staff, um, here in the near future to, uh, make sure we're all rolling in that same direction. We're having a little bit of a scheduling. We were, we were scheduled to have it this week. Um, it looks like it will be beginning of next week. Um, but I will reach out to him and convey the thoughts about the, uh, reaching out for the
I got an email from Patty Wedderling on Saturday asking what's up. And, uh, she copied Wood on it too. And haven't heard from him yet, so. I just, uh, I'm, I'm looking to you to hold him accountable, I guess is the best way to say it.
I back that up because as I had shared with you, that I have reached out three times now since that meeting and he has not responded back.
Good. I believe for most of us, our last point of contact was last January.
I, item eleven.
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.